Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we will administer the oath of office to Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Rayman. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of.
Macomb Township Trustee.
Macomb Township Trustee.
For a term ending at noon on November 20th, 2020.
For a term ending at noon, November 20th, 2020.
And in for the Township of Macomb.
And in for the Township of Macomb.
County of Macomb.
County of Macomb.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you. And I want to thank the Board also.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Busenow.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Here.
Clerk Posey here.
Supervisor Dunn.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I have a statement which I will read to you now. Upon the advice of my attorney, I have shared with the United States Attorney's Office, through my attorney, some information related to matters which have been publicly reported as under investigation by the federal authorities. I am not at liberty to say anything further at the moment. Thank you. Now we will have the approval of the agenda items, and I have another statement to read to you on the advice of the attorney also. Madam Clerk, as much as I am reluctant to do this, I would like to propose removing Agenda Item Number 22 and 23, and instead, I want to schedule a special meeting on February 19th, 2020, at 6:30 PM to include closed session for attorney-client confidential legal written opinion, discussion regarding whether or not just cause to discipline employee number 2205, and evaluate and consider the reorganization which would eliminate the combined position of Human Resources Director, General Counsel position. Thank you. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have one proposed add-on under New Business Item, Human Right Resources Item Number 17A, Authorization to Extend Offer Employment to the Planning Director. The Board members received this information at the panel this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, could you please tell us what attorney wrote that? Because I'm not sure who wrote that.
I'm not sure either. It was laying on my chair when I got here this evening.
Okay.
I'm assuming it was Mr. Meehan because he was here today.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Motion by Ms. Posey, supported by Ms. Smith, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make another motion just to approve the special meeting for February 19th at 6:30 PM to discuss the matters that you expressed this evening.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bus. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2020, as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. The Consent Agenda includes routine matters that come before the Court, before the Board. If anyone wishes to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2020, as presented. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. The Consent Agenda includes routine matters that come before the Court, before the Board. If anyone wishes to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so at this time. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments. This is on Agenda Items only. If you wish to address the Board, please come to the podium and state your name. Remember, you have a three-minute time limit. Agenda Items only. Seeing no one, we will move forward then, and this is for the public hearing, and this is for the 2020 Community Development Black Grant Funding. I will open the public hearing. It is 7:08. I will read to you that applications have been received from Macomb Township Senior Program in the amount of $31,000, Carehouse in the amount of $12,000, Interfaith Caregivers $672, Macomb County Warming Center $4,000, Wigs for Kids $2,000, Macomb County Chore Services $7,500, McCrest $1,890, Samaritan House $1,000, and Turning Point $1,500. Have I missed anyone that there would be people here to represent? I don't see anyone. Anyone wishing to address the Board, please come to the podium and state your request.
Did you open the public hearing?
Good evening. May I share some materials with the Board?
Certainly.
We can pass them down for you. Oh, thank you. Hi, my name is Dory Vaskis Nolan. I am a resident of Macomb Township and also the Executive Director of Carehouse, the Macomb County Child Advocacy Center. Our main office is located in Mount Clemens, and we also now have a satellite that's been open for about a year and a half located in the city of Warren. Our services are focused on child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, or children that may have been a witness to a violent act, as well as their non-offending family. Our goal is to minimize the trauma for child victims and their family, and to help them ease past that trauma and begin the healing process. Carehouse is one of 34 fully accredited children's advocacy centers in the state of Michigan serving over 53 counties, and one of over 800, almost 900 in the United States. We work closely and collaborate with all law enforcement jurisdictions in Macomb County, as well as the FBI, Homeland Security, and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. We also work closely with Children's Protective Services, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, and medical and mental health professionals. I come every year and speak to you, and I know that it is very difficult to talk and listen and hear about child sexual abuse. Unfortunately, we know that that's a big part of the problem. We can't wish away child sexual abuse or pretend that it doesn't exist. The truth is that one in 10 children will become victims of sexual abuse before they turn 18, and more children suffer from sexual abuse than from asthma and autism combined. That means that almost three kids in every classroom in the state of Michigan, and over 20,000 of all of the kids just here in Macomb County today are living with the trauma of sexual abuse. These numbers are surely much higher than our best estimates because most children never tell. And sadly, living with sexual abuse is a reality for children of every race, gender, and socioeconomic status. These kids could be your kids, your neighbor's kids, or your kid's friends. They could have maybe even been you or me. Over 90% of child victims know their abuser, and those that molest children look and act just like everyone else. They can be neighbors, friends, parents, coaches, teachers, clergy, or other family members. They can be adults or children, and they can be men or women. Kids that come to Carehouse come from every community in Macomb County, and they were spared the trauma of multiple forensic interviews. After our forensic interview, Carehouse also offers follow-up services for child victims and their parents, intervening to promote healing and helping families to cope with the emotional stress and trauma that is caused not only by those acts of abuse, but also by the investigative process. Those services include crisis counseling, child safety assessments, access to forensic medical examinations, parent and child support groups, trauma-focused therapy sessions, family advocacy, and referrals to other needed community services. We also serve as a designated counsel in Macomb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund, offering child abuse education and training to professionals in our community and just to the general public at large. Families are never charged for any of the services that they receive at Carehouse, and we provide services to all families that are referred to us. We're also very proud to report that according to our most recent independent financial audit, 86 cents of every dollar that comes to Carehouse is devoted specifically towards the services that we provide to children and families. Since we opened in 1996, we've conducted over 7,900 forensic interviews, and 430 of those cases involve children living in Macomb Township. In 2018, we did 753 interviews, and 60 of those children were residents of Macomb Township. Last year, we provided 757 forensic interviews with 30 of those families coming from Macomb. Last year, we were very grateful for the $1,000 that was allocated to Carehouse from Macomb Township, and that helped us support services for two Macomb Township families. We depend greatly on the support of our community to provide a voice for child victims and a safe place for them to be heard. We are grateful again to have you as an invested partner in our program. This year, we respectfully request your consideration for funding in the amount of $12,000 to help us support services for 20 families living with child sexual abuse or physical abuse. Those would be Macomb Township families that qualified with low or middle-income affidavits. Our website is www.mccarehouse.org. We also have an active Facebook that we invite you to follow. Thanks so much for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, not a question but a comment. Thanks for coming. I think this is the third or fourth time, I'm losing track of years since I've been elected, that I've heard you talk. Last year, your persistence paid off, and you got a grant. Hopefully, we give you some. This year was nice chatting with you before. Just to share something with the Board. Ironically, this week at the school I teach at Romeo High School is Charity Week, and the charity that the kids have chosen, the Student Council chose this year was Carehouse of Oakland County, who's affiliated with you. So I'm very well aware of your work and thanks for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to state, as a 30-plus-year county employee, we work very closely with Carehouse, and they do a beautiful job, beautiful job.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. May I present some information to you?
Sure. Yep. Just we'll both pass them out for you. Sure.
Hello, my name is Christina, and I'm the Finance Director at Maggie's Wigs for Kids of Michigan. I want to thank the Macomb Township Board of Trustees for your past support of our program that provides custom-fitted wigs and support services to Michigan children at no charge. You have all received a packet with more information about our program, along with our grant request. Founded in 2003, we've helped over 4,700 children, and the need is great. When these children come in through our doors, they're often angry, they won't look at you. That's because they're embarrassed about their appearance. However, once they've received that wig, everything changes. They start to feel confident about their appearance, they return to school and other activities with their friends and family. And with the demand for our services increasing, we are excited to announce that we will be opening a new wellness center this spring of 2020. Our new wellness center will help us double the amount of children we currently serve and help us expand our programming to incorporate a nutrition and fitness center to help with addressed nutritional needs, oncology and chair massages to promote health and well-being, nail services for when nails become brittle, discolored, or break, facials and skincare to help with the skin changes during their treatment, and enchanted tea room where these families can come for a light refreshment and snack. And in the evenings, the tea room can be converted into an endokemo party and life celebrations. And due to the children's health challenges, they often cannot be around large groups of people because of, because their immune system is not as well when they go through treatments. Our current and future facility is a controlled environment where they're safe to socialize without being exposed to the masses, and every room and its furnishings, surfaces are sanitized after each use, and these programs are available to the children in your area. Over the last few years, we've helped over six, about 16 children from your community, and we are asking for $1,000 for a child in the coming year. We keep our requests conservative based on the amount of children we serve in the previous years and their income levels. We do ask, if you ever know of a child in need of our services, please refer them to us. We help everyone, we charge nothing, and we turn no one away. And you're welcome to share the folder of information with your family, churches, schools, that maybe they know of a child that's in need of our services, and we can be reached at (586) 772-6656, or at www.wigsforkids.org. That's with the number four. On behalf of the children, I thank you for your consideration and support. Is there any questions?
Anyone?
I got one quick question. Just what's the rough cost average for fitting a child with a wig?
Well.
Just roughly.
About 27. With the wig and their support services, about 2,700.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're asking $1,000, and Wigs for Kids takes care of the rest.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I cheated and left the stuff on your desk before you got here, so I didn't have to pass it out. Karen Bates Gager, I'm here representing Turning Point this evening. Again, we appreciate and thank you for your contribution last year. We're very grateful for that. This year, we are requesting $1,500. So a couple things about Turning Point. This is our 40th year we're celebrating. We were established in 1980, so we've been serving survivors in Macomb County for 40 years. We have a comprehensive list of services. We have a 24-hour hotline. We have an emergency shelter, a 52-bed emergency shelter, which I will tell you is full to capacity pretty much 365 days of the year. We have individual and group counseling in five locations throughout the county. We are actually in Romeo Methodist Church as one of our outreach centers to try to make sure that we are everywhere in the county. We staff the Personal Protection Office at the Circuit Court here in Macomb County, so if you go in there, it's a collaboration that we have with the county. It appears to be a county facility, but it is actually staffed by Turning Point employees. We also have legal advocates scattered throughout the county in the various court systems. We provide the sexual assault exams for Macomb County as well as St. Clair County. Last year, we did nearly 400 sexual assault exams just in Macomb County. We also have community presentations. We have prevention education. Last year, we saw nearly 10,000 children, again, in middle school and high school, and Romeo is one of our schools, so thank you for that. So last year.
Shout-outs to Romeo.
Lots of shout-outs to Romeo. But we're kind of everywhere. We're actually in Utica Schools, so we're in actually pretty much, I think, in all the schools that are encompassed by Macomb Township. So last year, we did have four residents of Macomb Township that sought shelter with us, including several children. During the nights that they spent with us, we provide shelter, basic needs, meals, crisis intervention, case management, childcare, program advocacy, and support groups. We also had three Macomb Township survivors that we provided personal protection orders to. We had three survivors that came through our counseling department. We did, we had two sexual assault survivors that we did rape kits, if you will, that we provided services to, and we had a number of Macomb Township residents that used our hotline. All of our services are also free, so we're helping upwards of 30,000 if we start adding all of our stuff together. So we have a great many people that we are helping. We have, like I said, requested $1,500. That actually would provide up to 60 shelter nights, because we do it at a, we figure a reduced rate of $25 a night. Again, very grateful for your support last year, and I too will answer any questions. Oh, you know what? And I'm going to take the moment to use (586) 463-6990 is our crisis line, and it's answered by a human being 24 hours a day. I just wanted to put that out there because the crisis line is kind of the gateway to all of our services, so it's an incredibly important number, so I would put that out there.
Excuse me, would you repeat that number? I wasn't prepared to write.
Oh, I'm sorry, because I threw it in at the end. It's (586) 463-6990 is the crisis line.
Thank you.
And our website is turningpointmacomb.org, and people can reach out to us through our website as well.
I have to.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, another program through the courts that you guys are so busy all the time.
I was just saying, if you work at the county, you know that we have, the PPO office is a very, very busy office.
You guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi there, Jay Lamke. Wonderful places you're helping. I do want to question American House, though. That's a for-profit business. Why are we donating money to a for-profit business when there are such wonderful charities as we just heard about? Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well, we will move on. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to close the public hearing. It is 7:25, and everything is different at the county this year. So the way I understand it, the county now makes the appropriations. So, excuse me, that will require no motion whatsoever. So we'll move on to New Business. And the Water and Sewer Department has a request to approve the blanket maintenance permit with the Macomb County Department of Roads. Mr. Winkler.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. Pretty simple request here from the Department of Roads. They're asking for a basic blanket, five-year blanket permit. This will cover, should the township hire a contractor, do make an emergency repair, any type of tap repair in the road right-of-way. They're asking for a couple things here. They're asking for a list of names that could sign the permit. They're asking for an insurance certificate, and with that said, I'm recommending we move forward with this with the ability of the Water and Sewer Superintendent, as well as his assistant, to sign this permit on behalf of Macomb Township. The other neat thing about this is, is there's no fee required with this permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the blanket maintenance permit with the Macomb County Department of Roads, the five-year permit.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers.
Charlie did it first.
Okay. No, that's okay. That's fine.
Charlie did it first. Okay.
I'll get a little louder next time.
All right. The motion was seconded by Mr. Oliver. Sorry, Ms. Nevers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Engineering Department has a request to approve the extension of time for landscaping and site improvement for still-water-crossing site condominiums. Mr. Van Tifflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, Board members, this is a typical request that we receive from developers this time of year when you can't install landscaping and other site improvements. They are requesting an extension of time until June 30th of 2020. We've reviewed the request and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tifflin? Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the extension of time for landscaping and site improvements for still-water-crossing site condominiums until June 30th, 2020. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is a request to adjust engineering plan review fees. Mr. Van Tifflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, Board members, in the land division, or I'm sorry, Land Development Ordinance, it requires that each year, the amount that the Water and Sewer Department charges for engineering plan review fees be adjusted in accordance with the last year's CPI, Consumer Price Index. So the difference between this year and the previous year, it went from 68870 to 60590. We're recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adjust the engineering plan review fees based on the current year's CPI number. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And the next one is a request for authorization for the supervisor to sign quitclaim deeds for the dedication of the Ultimate Road Right-of-Way for Macomb Township-owned properties. Mr. Van Tifflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, Board members, the Engineering Department has been working with the Department of Roads with regard to all the properties that the Township owns to make sure that the right-of-way is dedicated. We have had a couple of these before the Board previously. We now have another four that the Department of Roads has prepared the necessary documents to dedicate their ultimate right-of-way. We've reviewed this and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign the quitclaim deeds for the dedication of the Ultimate Road Right-of-Way from Macomb Township-owned properties.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And the next one is a request for authorization for the supervisor to sign quitclaim deeds for the dedication of the Ultimate Road Right-of-Way for Macomb Township-owned properties. Mr. Van Tifflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, Board members, the Engineering Department has been working with the Department of Roads with regard to all the properties that the Township owns to make sure that the right-of-way is dedicated. We have had a couple of these before the Board previously. We now have another four that the Department of Roads has prepared the necessary documents to dedicate their ultimate right-of-way. We've reviewed this and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign the quitclaim deeds for the dedication of the Ultimate Road Right-of-Way from Macomb Township-owned properties.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. And the next one is a request for authorization for the supervisor to sign quitclaim deeds for the dedication of the Ultimate Road Right-of-Way for Macomb Township-owned properties. Mr. Van Tifflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, Board members, the Engineering Department has been working with the Department of Roads with regard to all the properties that the Township owns to make sure that the right-of-way is dedicated. We have had a couple of these before the Board previously. We now have another four that the Department of Roads has prepared the necessary documents to dedicate their ultimate right-of-way. We've reviewed this and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize the Township Supervisor to sign the quitclaim deeds for the dedication of the Ultimate Road Right-of-Way from Macomb Township-owned properties.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the last one is a request to approve release of utility easements for the water main at Lutheran North High School. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, Board Members, recently Lutheran High North has had an expansion to their facility. In order to facilitate that expansion, we have had to relocate one of our water mains so it's not underneath the building. That work has now been completed, and we're in the position now where we can release the easement that was in place for the old water main, so it's not underneath the building. So, we've reviewed the release and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Anyone?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to approve the release of utility easement for water main at Lutheran High North. Excuse me, Lutheran North High.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a Human Resources Request to Authorization to Extend an Offer of Employment for the Election Manager. Since there's no one here to represent the Human Resources Department, I will do this. We posted the position. There was one internal candidate, and we have conferred amongst the three top elected officials, and we would like to appoint Mickey Todd in that position. Any questions?
Madam Chair, the only thing you said, "nobody was here," from the Human Resource Department. Charlene Arves here, and her name's on another.
Sure?
Yeah. Okay, because we got another one, too, that would come up, so I don't know if she wants to come up and speak since she requested it, or not, but she's here.
If she wishes to come up and speak.
Okay, I'm just saying, she's here. There is a representative from the Human Resource Department here, so.
Make it a form of a motion, Janet. Pardon? Make it a form of a motion.
Would you like to make that into a motion?
Do we have Char come up?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the promotion of EE 1274.
Support.
To the position of Elections Manager.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bosno.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, babe. Under planning and zoning, we have a rezoning request, and this is agricultural to residential urban one-family located on the south side of 25 Mile Road, one quarter-
Madam Chair, we, yeah, we have an add-on.
Oh.
Was the planning director?
Yeah, you didn't send me that thing. I'm sorry. The add-on.
Authorization to extend the offer of employment.
This one I will need help on. Charlene? Sorry.
Sorry to call you out, Char.
You helped me out with this one. We interviewed how many people?
So, the board approved the township, Human Resources Department, to recruit for new planning director. With the help of Amy Selt-Halen, we did receive nine applications for the position. Eight were interviewed by the selection committee consisting of Treasurer Goodhue, Clerk Posey, Supervisor Dunn, and our engineer, Jim Van Tiflin. Based on those interviews, the panel is asking to move forward and offer employment to Josh Box.
He originally worked in this area, and he's right now out in Grand Rapids. But during the interview process, we discovered that he knew a lot of the individuals that work closely with the township, and we thought it would be an especially good fit. So, at this point, I am asking for a motion to-
Madam Chair, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
The effective hire date is March 16th.
Honor after, it says.
Still a few weeks away, right?
Correct.
So, we have a couple meetings between now and then, but we, you knew what was going on, and people interviewed them, but we got this at the last minute as an add-on.
Right.
When he's not starting for quite a long time down the road, why was this an add-on?
Well, we wanted to get the process going, seeing that he is across the state. There are conditional offers that, postoffer conditions that have to be met before he could officially give notice to his employer, make arrangements to move to the area, things of that nature.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to authorize, to extend the offer of employment of Planning Director to Josh Brack.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Thank you, Charlene. That motion carries. Under planning and zoning, we have a request to rezone a property from agricultural to residential one-family located on the south side of 25 Mile Road and a quarter-mile east of Romeo Plank. Mr. Skirdo?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson and the Board Members. Yes, we do have a request to rezone a parcel of land from agriculture to one, R1, one-family residential. The Planning Commission conducted its required public hearing on January 21st, 2020. Following that public hearing, the Planning Commission is issuing a recommendation to approve. They use the following reasons. Reason one is the master plan shows the property used for residences at a density of three units per acre. Item two is the R1 zoning, as requested, matches with the master plan designation. And the third item is all surrounding property is zoned the same as R1. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the rezoning request agricultural to residential urban one-family located on the south side of 25 Mile Road and a quarter-mile east of Romeo Plank, permanent parcel number 080820009, based upon the recommendation of the master plan, and all the various departments that have given recommendations, along with the similarities in the use of the parcel and surrounding parcels. Thanks for the long motion there.
Is there a motion by Ms. Posey?
I'll support that.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. We'll move on to the Fire Department. This is a request to promote a probationary firefighter. Chief Phillips?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, this evening, I'm recommending the promotion of probationary firefighter, Thomas Smith, to the position of paid-on-call firefighter. Firefighter Smith has successfully completed his 12-month probation period and is recommended for promotion by the Probationary Development Committee and myself. And with that, I would recommend his advancement to paid-on-call firefighter and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I think it's appropriate for Ms. Smith to make the motion since the last name's the same. There's no relation. Oh, you want me to do that? Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion. To request to promote probationary firefighter is a Thomas Smith.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
At this time, I'd like to call firefighter Smith up to receive his badge and his helmet shield.
Thank you.
Maybe we are related. We'll have to talk later. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. The next request is to renew radio recording system agreement.
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to renew the agreement that we have with Equiture, which is the company that provides the hardware and software that records all of our emergency and non-emergency radio traffic. Current agreement has been in place since April of 2015, and we've had no issues with the equipment or the company, and the recordings are utilized on a daily basis. I'm requesting renewal of a five-year agreement. The renewal will include the upgrading of the software and the hardware. The first-year cost for the renewal is $3,656, and then $2,820 each year after. I've attached the proposal, and this was included in the current budget, and with that, I'm requesting a motion to approve the five-year renewal with Equiture. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the five-year renewal with Equiture.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
And Madam Supervisor, if I could just add, for the boards, an update in the public. As of last Thursday, we vacated Fire Station 1. We have moved into the new apparatus bays. They are, primary completion on that is done. We have the crews operating completely out of the new apparatus bays. Fire Station 1, the asbestos remediation was completed today. We are on track, and each of you should have received an email this evening. Next Wednesday, the 19th, at 10:00 a.m., we will have a decommissioning ceremony of Station 1 prior to the demolition starting on that. So, we expect that to be down by the end of next week and cleaned up, and then construction to start on Phase 3 of the project.
Thank you. And I should point out that under the chief's direction, the existing new fire station came in on time and under budget. So, thank you so much. Now, we have the Finance Department and a request to approve the travel expense policy. Ms. Smith?
Good evening. Before you tonight, you have some proposed revisions to the township's travel expense policy, which was last updated about 11 years ago. The suggested changes have been highlighted in yellow, and the IRS uses the federal meal and incidental expense rates issued by the U.S. General Services Administration for standard meal allowances. The rate of $55 that was included in the revised travel expense policy is the meal and incidental expense standard rate for fiscal year 2020 for the state of Michigan. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the revised travel expense policy.
Thank you. Anyone?
I'll make a motion that we approve the revised travel expense policy.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
And I'll support that.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Number 22 and 23 have been removed from the agenda, so we will move on to public comments. These are comments on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium and state your name. Remember, you have three minutes.
Good evening. John Parkinson, address is on file at the clerk's office. Madam Supervisor, I will address you as such for the last time. It is my opinion that you are not fit to be Supervisor of Macomb Township any longer. I have watched you on several occasions fumble for words and lose focus. I have seen you interact with the board, the HR, general counsel, and the residents of the township you are supposed to serve. Clerk Posey and many other members of the board have had to remind you who has made motions and seconds. Clerk Posey has helped you stay on track, and I'm sure you are grateful to her for that. You have disgustingly spoke to our, to or about several residents. One instance, I remember so vividly, was the African-American couple, the Sumters, who claimed the cement contractor, Luigi's, cracked their driveway while repairing sidewalks. You said you spoke with the contractor and took the side of the contractor without even looking at it yourself. Your position was that the contractor didn't cause the damage. However, it is possible and probable that they did cause it. What would it truly cost the township to repair that driveway? We are spending money on properties we don't need, on lawsuits we shouldn't have, and a general counsel, HR director, who should have never been hired. Ms. Dunn, you have let us down. Your recent move to terminate the HR general counsel comes a little too late. We, the people, feel you have not served the township in the best interest of the residents. At this time, I, John Parkinson, a resident of this great township, call for your resignation.
Anyone else?
Hello, Board Members. My name's Dan Johnson. My address is also on file. Just wanted to talk to the board of a few lighter things. Ms. Posey, first. Indeed, you listen to us and other residents, and you answer all our questions and have taken time out of your busy schedule and day to address our concerns. Our family personally feels that you deserve the raise, and thanks for your direct attention that you have given us. Mr. Bosno, we see how you handle the issues and look out for the best interests of the township. You continuously speak up for what is right in a professional manner. We appreciate that, and thank you for what you do. Mr. Oliver, nice to meet you, sir.
I'm let off the hook.
Thank you for stepping in, and we hope to get to know you better, and we appreciate your willingness to take on these concerns at hand. Please help with the township and the board to come together as a team, because this township needs a lot of attention at this critical time. Ms. Dunn, it would be a shame for all these other board members and their reputation to be tarnished by all the allegations against you. We need to take the necessary steps, protect the township's finances and its citizens today. Many of these residents are all here, would probably like it if you would resign tonight, and I am one of them for sure. You need to start doing what's right for the township and do the right thing. To all the other board members, thank you for your time tonight, and God bless all the people in this room and our township and America.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mark Grabo. The address is on file at the clerk's office. Congratulations, Charlie. Keep a large picture vice order, my friend. It's always busy. There's a lot of good things going on in this township, but the sad part is, is there's a lot of bad things going on. In 2008, we started a process of keeping information. It continued for a number of years. In 2012, there was not only allegations, there was fraudulent activity within this township. People found guilty, people punished. 2016, let me read a quote on a political flyer endorsed by you, Mrs. Dunn. "I'm urging all Macomb Township voters to reject the full of lies, heat-filled, unsigned, vicious, personal, political mail attacks on Township trustee Dino Pucci, who has an outstanding record of representing the taxpayers of the township." Oh, it's outstanding, all right. This is the epicenter, and it's embarrassing to continue to be the epicenter. It's never Macomb County. It's continuously Macomb Township. We're down to three. You ladies served on this board with me, and whichever one of you- You ladies served on this board with me and whichever one of you have these allegations, inner doings, and activities of the potential corruption, which we need to clean up once and for all, and the residents are clearly speaking, at the end of this year, we will clean it up. But there's three of you left on this board. God rest the souls that have passed on. There's two of them. One's already in prison, one's facing 18 felony counts. Who's facing what next? Let's do the right thing. Let's clean it up. You were warned way back when. It's clear, it's coming, and it continues to be an epicenter. I don't know how you can hold your head up high and walk in this township office. It's shameful. Have a good night.
Anyone else?
The first thing I want to do is fix the microphone because that's what Roger always told me to do. Charlie, fix the microphone, speaking of the microphone. Me and Roger didn't always see eye to eye, but I know two things about Roger. He absolutely loves this township and he loved the veterans and I think we all love the veterans. So, Roger, and I was in Florida when he passed, so. Anyways, 2020 is finally here. I've waited a long time for 2020. I really have. This board is, you know, last week, we're on the front page of the Macomb Daily again, C and G paper, it's all negative. And this township is just so good. Excuse me, we actually have a lot of good people on this board. Charlie, I've known you a long time. Kathy, I've known you for 25 years. Ms. Goodhue, not so much, but the Clerk's office, Kristi, is, I can't think of nicer people with Roger and Mickey and Ed Carey, of course, so. And Ms. Dunn, obviously, we've got some problems here, so I'm not really sure what's going on with the FBI or whoever, but it's all negative. It's not good. Ms. Nevers, for my passion for Hope Not Handcuffs, I'm eternally thankful for your donation a couple of years ago. And of course, Tim Bozeno. Tim, I think the world of you. I want to be sitting somewhere on this board next year, so that's my hope. I did file on Monday for a Township trustee. I believe that what I bring to the table is integrity, accountability, and transparency. And one final thing on the Thomas Assorti situation, obviously, anybody that knows anything about, you know, General Counsel, HR position, blah, 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 that's the most blatant form of a conflict of interest I've ever seen. I was with the Sheriff's Department for 31 years. It's just unheard of, so hopefully, you know, we get that all situated too. Thank you so much. I'm sorry. Charles T. Missig, 1-6884, Kenneth.
Anyone else?
Yes, fix the microphone and put on my glasses. I hope that doesn't bother you, Nancy.
Not a bit.
Regarding bashing of leadership, I would like to point out that leadership does not exist in a vacuum and one person on this board cannot control everything. Votes are what the votes are. And it has been said that the one, number one rule of leadership is very simple. You do what you say you're going to do. Each of you, as a member of the Board of Trustees, think about whether you've honored the commitments you have made before the public. Have you faithfully adhered to the motions agreed upon by this board? I know Charlie well in the future. But when you fail to do what you say you're going to do, you signal that you are unreliable and perhaps undeserving of this office. As the board, you are not only accountable as individuals, but you need to hold each other accountable as part of the public trust. So if, for example, a couple of years ago, Treasurer Karen Goodhue announced that she and the lawyer were creating a social media policy, they should have done it or she should have come back to share why she had abandoned the project. And after 22 members of the staff, the employees here, signed a letter detailing their dissatisfaction with some aspects of management here at the township, trustee Nancy Nevers told us more than once that she was very concerned and she was going to meet with every one of those employees individually, privately, to hear what their issues were. Now, did she work diligently to carry that out? Did that happen? Or were those statements just to be overly dramatic and theatrical? And what if this board established a contract to hire a person to be the HR Director and Legal Counsel and had written into the contract that the employee's performance and that contract would be reviewed annually, but three years passed and it did not get done and you didn't hold each other accountable to that? Instead, we had things like Nancy Nevers comparing Thomas Assorti to the President of the United States. And to steal a line from a friend of mine, that is a bridge too far. Treasurer Karen Goodhue told us that Thomas Assorti is tough and that's why you hired him. But you know, you have wonderful employees here. Not sure that toughness needs to be what you lead with, but to provide for them going forward the kind of work environment that they can flourish in. And welcome back to the board, Charlie Oliver. Thank you.
Address is on file at the Clerk's office. Just want to say welcome to the board. Hopefully, things change around here. I wish you the best of luck. Hopefully, the board never makes this mistake again as far as hiring one person to do the HR and the Legal Counsel. Hopefully, you learn from your mistakes that it just doesn't work and more importantly, that you don't ever give anybody a just cause contract again, that everybody's at will contract, just like every other job out there in today's day and ages. I got to say, Tim, I think you're going to finally get some backing and some help up there. This is the first time, I've been coming to these meetings for over two years now. I see four people that are, I think, are pretty good. Unfortunately, the three of yous up there, you've lost my trust, you've lost residents' trust, and I hope you're considering turning in your resignation and there's no secret, I hope you're not reelected come November. Thank you.
Anybody else? We will move on then to board comments. We will start with trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may. Ms. Western, I, there is no way I would ever compare anybody to our President, Donald J. Trump, the gift that keeps on giving. However, I do remember saying that physical stature-wise, Mr. Assorti reminds me of Mr. Pompeo, not our President. Okay? And regarding the people that I've spoken to, I made it a point to come and talk to the people who signed the letter whom I felt I needed to get their input. There are other people that signed that I pretty much knew how they felt. I haven't completed the whole entire list and we had a very busy end of year. I wasn't exactly the healthiest person for the last eight months, eight weeks, but I feel that I got a very good, I got a very good feel for the people with whom I spoke and when I saw the evaluations, I could pretty much tell who wrote what. And so, with that, I feel like I did fulfill that obligation. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. Since the events of the last few weeks, I've been able to speak with lawyers, some board members, political allies, and political foes regarding multiple events of the past few weeks. Some of those issues continue to play out here tonight. But on the evening of the date when we celebrate Abraham Lincoln's birthday, a President who is famous for delivering these words in the Gettysburg Address, that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from this earth. I'm going to utilize my time by addressing the residents, or in Lincoln's words, the people, who allow us to govern up here. Not all residents are on social media, a platform where I and many politicians are able to express themselves quite often. But those that are know that myself and others have been using the term moving forward in relation to the culture of Town Hall and connecting the dots in relation to corruption information released recently. Some residents feel we have not moved forward quickly enough away from all of this. Some feel that we are moving slowly. Some feel like we have not moved forward at all. I want residents to know as a trustee, I believe we have moved forward, are still moving forward since I've been on this board, but there is a lot of work to do. Some of the ways we have and continue to move forward include ending healthcare for part-time trustees. We voted to approve an ethics ordinance and as you see tonight, we are taking steps towards improving the culture at Town Hall. Personally, I've been able to gain a great working relationship with a trustee I did not vote to appoint, Kathy Smith. She knows why I didn't vote and I've mentioned it before. I've had long conversations with Charlie Oliver to clear up misconceptions about what has been going on at Town Hall so we can positively work together. Actually, Charlie and I have had some great conversations lately. He's even offered to drive me around Macomb to different properties and explain the history of the property developments. That is definitely a mentoring opportunity that I'm going to take you up on, Charlie. Clerk Posey and I have found a way to open up a line of communication and find common ground on some issues despite facing challenges of doing that early on in our terms. Most importantly, I have received apologies recently from a couple of forces in the township that have done wrong to me or not did enough to prevent what was done to me. But for us to fully move on, I believe there will be many more apologies that need to be made to all those who have suffered sleepless nights, feelings of job insecurities, job interruptions, terminations of employment, and/or political intimidation because of what has taken place in this township. All this has been done to protect the close-knit political entity that has benefited many ways by keeping this toxic culture in place. New details of the term coined the Macomb Township Way have surfaced recently in federal court documents and we all know there will be more to come as Macomb Township and Macomb County corruption trials progress. A recent detail from a corruption sentencing document sheds light or connects the dots on an employee's situation, a situation I believe led to the firing and eventual reinstatement of a Macomb Township employee, a situation that I and the board had to deal with when I first took a seat on the board, and I do not think there was transparency of the root cause of the firing of that employee. Based on the documents I've seen about that case very recently, the knowledge I've been given about that case and the way some currently on this board and not currently on this board intentionally treated that employee, that employee, I believe, deserves a big apology. Moving forward, I need to know more apologies are going to be given, not to me, but to the residents and some employees, current and former. They are the true victims of what has taken place at Macomb Town Hall. The residents and the employees are the victims. When I ran for this seat, I knew the abuse I was going to go through based on the way the political table was set in this township was going to happen. However, many employees and residents and others had no idea what they were running into. They are not to be forgotten as new leadership continues to take hold as we move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Timmy Dunn.
Yes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Alrighty. I have a few comments. A couple of things. One, I want to thank the board for appointing me. It's very humbling. It really is. I'm not really a mushy guy, but you mushed me up. Right? Number two, I want to thank the residents who are just coming up. That is humbling. It really is. So, thank you. Just a couple of things I do want to clear up. On the 15th, I wasn't able to make the interviews because we had a planned family vacation. I planned a year ago and if anyone don't know, I'm a farmer and I have a very limited time to go away with my family and we were able to go away with three family members, four actually. And so, we did take that vacation and today I'm glad I did because some of the events that happened after that vacation. So, if I offended anyone by not being here for the meeting or the interviews, I'm sorry. But I think if people would understand, but I just wanted to make sure they knew that's why I was gone. So, again, thank you. And Tim, I want to personally thank you. I watched that meeting and them were very kind words you said about me and you didn't know me. You really didn't know me, Tim, so thank you. I really appreciate that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kathy? Very well. We'll move on to treasurer's comments.
I always hate to talk about taxes, but it is that time of the year and this year we have a leap year day, so that is the 29th, which happens to fall on Saturday. So, we will be actually taking payments on March the 2nd because that's the next business day. We will accept payments until that day. March the 3rd, they will go delinquent to the county and then they will have to be paid there. So, just to want to make you aware of those timelines and I want to thank you very much.
Ms. Posey, clerk's comments.
Thanks, Madam Supervisor. The March 10th presidential primary election is just around the corner. Absentee ballots are an easy way to vote early and avoid lines in the polls. You can vote by absent mail-in ballot in the state of Michigan for any reason or no reason at all. As an added convenience to our residents and to allow them to take advantage of this option, the Clerk's office will, we have extended our hours the week prior to the election. From Monday, March 2nd to Thursday, March 5th, we will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. On Friday, March 6th, we'll be open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and on Tuesday, March 10th, we will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you wish to vote early by absent ballot, voting booths and a ballot drop box are available outside the Clerk's department. Your ballot will be tabulated with all absent mail-in ballots on Election Day. If you would like to receive your ballot by mail, please contact the Clerk's office for an application to do so. Keep in mind, the Clerk's office must receive your application by 5:00 p.m. on the Friday before the election or you can receive your ballot at the Clerk's office until 4:00 p.m. on Monday, March 9th, but you must vote and leave it in the drop box on that day. Lastly, all absent mail-in ballots we received applications for have been mailed. If you would like to still receive a mail-in ballot, you can request an application by contacting my office. However, it must be received by the Clerk's office no later than 5:00 p.m. on Friday, March 6th. You might need a whiteboard for all these dates. If we can assist with your voting experience in any way, please do not hesitate to contact us. And also, I would just like to extend my thoughts and prayers to Mr. Oliver's family during this difficult time.
Thank you.
That's all. Supervisor's comments. I really have nothing this evening except that one of my very favorite people in the whole world is now sitting on the end of this dais right here. I can't tell you how many times in the past I have called him. He's taken time out from his busy farm life and walked me through it or remembered this and we've had a lot of good talks. I'm sure we'll have more. Thank you, Charlie, for agreeing to do this.
Thank you very much.
You by far were the most qualified You by far were the most qualified candidate.
Thank you. I'll do my best.
I know you will. That's all I have. We have one item to discuss in closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee, or Clerk Posey? Yes. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bosino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
We are adjourned to closed session. We have returned from closed session. There was one item discussed. Are there any motions on the status of the pending litigation, Macomb County Circuit
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize settlement of litigation 2019-0031513-CZ.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone's so...
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Bosino. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It was supported by Ms. Nevers.
Ms. Nevers, sorry. That motion passes, and we are adjourned.